To order the August, uh, not August, June 9th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Yes, Chairman Moffett.
Here.
Commissioner Dallo.
Here.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Here.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Here.
Commissioner Oppone.
Here.
Commissioner Waxmanzki. Absent. Commissioner Byer.
Here.
And Secretary Moore is absent, and we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect, we're joined by the Township's Planner, Mr. Glenn Nguyen, and the Township Attorney, Mr. Bob Kirk. For next, if there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of minutes from the May 28th regular meeting. If there are no corrections or additions, I will entertain a motion.
Support.
By Dallo, support by DeCicco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next item, under site plan, this evening, we have two. The first, we'll enter into a public hearing to discuss a proposed cell tower. Madam Secretary, would you read the public notice as printed?
Yes, notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant is Michael Gasser, Fortune Wireless. The proposed use is wireless communication tower. The location, southeast corner of 25 Mile Road into Quinder, in the Regency Hills Shopping Center/Kroger. Site plan number 13-17 SLU-6. Sidewell number 23-07-07-100-029. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, June 9th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 5270 Van Dyke Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. This application for special land use on the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, and Rachel Muller, Secretary. 401 property owners and two applicants were notified on May 23rd, 2014.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all of your requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Can you explain the uses under the President's zoning, and if the special land use request is appropriate to this district? And because what they're proposing is also governed by FCC, federal law, can you, kind of give, maybe just give us a thumbnail as to, you know, how much latitude we have with this?
Yes, the current zoning is a commercial zone. The request is proper under our special land use ordinance. Section 1240 provides for communication tower development standards. In addition, the federal law really preempts the local law with regard to placement of these towers. The federal government has really stepped in and has kind of tied the local government's hands in these matters. For example, you can't really put any conditions on their approval. You cannot deny it based upon environmental effects such as frequency emissions, and whatever decision you make has to be based on substantial evidence contained within the record. So it's one of the most protected uses there are by the federal government.
Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, did we receive correspondence on this?
Yes, we received seven letters from those, the residents that were notified, mostly in opposition to the placement of the cell tower. The main, the main points were the negative effects to the home values and the impact on the humans of the wireless microwave radiation, and basically unsightly in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. The format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or the representative will be allowed to come up and make their request, state the reasons for their requests. Commissioners will then ask any questions that they have. I'll then open the floor to the public for any comments or questions, and then finally I'll bring the petitioner back up to answer any of the questions that are raised. At this point, I see the petitioner's here. If you could come in and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Michael Gasser. I'm with Crown Castle, and our address is 3939 Priority Way South, Suite 250 Indianapolis, Indiana, 46256.
Chairman, have him speak into the microphone.
Have him pull that up a little bit.
Elevated.
A little better?
We'll try.
I'll try and get the voice up.
People out here can't hear you either.
Yes, sir. And I wanted to specify that I'm with Crown Castle. When this petition began, I was with a vendor called Fortune Wireless, and had filed on behalf of Crown Castle. This process takes quite a while, and during that period, I moved to Crown Castle as their real estate specialist, and took the petition with me at the behest of my previous employer. We're, there's, there's multiple companies here working together, including Fortune Wireless, who is charged with locating potential locations for, potential candidates for a tower. Crown Castle is a tower company. We are, in essence, a wireless hotel. We build wireless communications facilities, manage wireless communications facilities, and act as liaison between wireless carriers or wireless companies, I should say. So, and AT&amp;T was the, the company that was looking for a location for their wireless facility. They contacted Fortune Wireless. Fortune Wireless, over, it's actually been about seven years trying to locate a proper location. And then Crown Castle, who had the, the communications with this particular property owner, was able to bring everything together, and that's where we're at. That's what I bring you now. So, on behalf of those, all those companies, we respectfully request permission to place a wireless communication facility at the proposed location, which is 2058 25 Mile Road. Actually, I think we have a different address for the, for the shelter facility that's proposed. We have thoroughly examined the Shelby Township wireless ordinances, as well as the entirety of the ordinances, to make sure that we were designing a facility that would comply with the ordinance. We think that we've, we've designed one that would not only meet AT&amp;T's gap in coverage, and I think we've provided documentation referring to their gap in coverage, but we've also designed the facility specifically to comply with the use requirements, tower setback requirements, height requirements, the, and I'll go through all this, and I brought some, some presentation documents just to show, talk a little bit about the design. That's specifically what I'm here is, to discuss the design and how it complies with your, with your wireless ordinance. The shelter buildings that we've designed with, to meet the wireless requirements, the lighting, structural integrity, integrity, excuse me. Parking is already provided to this facility, so that was not something we had to work through. Colocation, colocation is really, Crown Castle, as I said, are, we rent locations to multiple wireless communication providers, so, multiple carriers. So if we have, it's in our best interest to design a facility that's colocatable. So, that fits right in with your ordinance. And then, as far as the facility, I think that we've met all of the, again, we've met all of the requirements of the ordinance.
Tell you what, can I get, maybe, I would have you back up just a little bit, you know, maybe, you know, let's talk bigger picture, and then you can kind of, you know, go through, you know, each of the ordinances and how you've met it.
Yeah.
Can you talk about why there? You know, what process did you go through to select the, you know, why is it necessary that it be placed in that location? You know, and have you exhausted other locations? And then, I think specifically, okay, what, what is this going to look like? And that, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
Mostly what folks are looking for.
As I said, Fortune Wireless, I'm specifically zoning and planning section of Fortune Wireless. So they had a lengthy search for a location.
The audience can't hear him, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I don't know what to do about the mic, but is anybody in the control room?
Here, try this, and see if this works any better.
Without, I don't want to cause it.
I think you need to speak up, too.
Yeah.
You need to project a little more.
Well, the, the, the search for facility, I mean, I know that they, they had looked for a facility at the Metro Park, and that was not a viable solution. They had checked a golf course just north of park, up here, and that was not acceptable. I, I don't know all of the facilities they had looked for placing on a transmission tower, and the transmission tower's not. Not only is there not a transmission tower that would, would be structurally viable, but there's not one in the area that would fill the gap in coverage. So that the, you know.
What area are you trying to fill? Where is there the gap?
You have the propagation maps that were provided.
Why don't you explain it? Can you explain it to?
So the, the original search ring began at, I think this is 26 Mile into Quinder. And the search, the search area was, was exhausted as far as locating a viable facility. They could not find a property that was properly zoned. You may well know that this is, there's a lot of residential property in this area. So, trying to find a commercial location, they didn't, again, contact the Metro, Metro Park, and Metro Park was not able to, to do this. They would have liked to, but, but as I understand, they were under obligation from receiving federal grants. They can't receive, they can't then receive finance from a commercial enterprise. So they're not allowed to make a profit, basically. So, again, we, there was, there is, we're looking at the area 25 Mile into Quinder. There is a transmission tower to the east, approximately one mile to the east, which is not structurally viable, and the RF engineers looked at it, and it still would not fill the gap in coverage. Do you have this?
Mr. Chairman, they're really not, they're very hard to read unless somebody just explains them, because. Yeah, and frankly, you're not going to have enough copies for everyone in the audience that.
I don't have enough for everybody, no.
Right, so, I mean, just give some rough parameters, if you can.
As far as, I mean, the gap in coverage.
How big is it? Can you tell me how many square?
It's approximately, approximately a mile and a half, two miles, east to west, center basically onto Quinder, and approximately a mile and a half north to south, beginning at 25 Mile and going north to the lake. I don't know what lake that is, so I apologize.
Stony Creek.
Stony Creek. Again, originally, they wanted to locate it at 26 Mile. There were a couple of different options that were not acceptable by either the property owner or by, you know, the park couldn't do it. So, we came to this property here, discovered that it was properly zoned, we had a willing property owner. We were able to meet through the design, meet the maximum height restriction, which is 100 feet, the maximum setback requirement, which is half the distance, or, I'm sorry, twice that distance. The, and, and looking at the propagation maps, once this proposed facility was to be installed, there would still be a gap in coverage. This does not fulfill the, the gap in coverage. So if you were to look on the last page of your, of your propagation maps, it's just with the, with the location, the topography, the demand on coverage, there's so many things that go into the, these propagation maps, and that's probably as in-depth as I can get with a propagation map, not being an RF engineer. But the maps are pretty self-explanatory when, if you were to look at them.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nguyen.
Just, again, it's, it's hard, I improvise, because they're really hard to read with no reference points on, unless, you know, but it's.
So we're talking about maybe a mile and a half north and south, by a mile and a half east and west.
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Somewhat centered around 25 into Quinder.
The, the area that's not covered in Shelby is basically between 25 and 26 Mile, between Shelby Road into Quinder.
Okay.
And, and this, the propagation map that Mr. Gasser provided with this location would largely pick up the western half of that square mile.
Okay.
Briarwood and the subdivision to the north.
Right, right. So, if you'd like, I, I wanted to give you a little bit more background on the types of towers that we have. The, the ordinance here is, is very specific, that it has to be a stealth-designed tower that will fit in with the community. We think we found the best way to do that at this specific location. But just to give you an idea of the types of location, or types of facilities, I just took random, a few different types of towers that we're looking at. And you're, I mean, you may all be very familiar with these, but starting with, your, your most common tower in this area is a monopole tower. Oh, thank you. The one to the, to the, to the far right. It's a monopole tower, usually used in a more urban area. Heights, usually you'll see these, a maximum of about 250. Now, you will find some locations, they can get up to 350. They're also used for wind energy. Those will, a wind, a wind turbine will generally be about 300 feet tall. The one to, in the center is a, and this, I'm sorry, this monopole here is specifically 140 feet in height. The one in the center is a self-support tower, lattice tower. This one specifically is 250 feet in height. Generally, you'll see those in a little bit more urban areas, they're, they're, the, an area where you have land that's not as, under demand. So the, the, the tower can support taller equipment, and it's, you know, the nice thing about the, the self-support towers is, from a distance, they start to disappear quicker than like a monopole tower. And you would think, oh, it's one, one pole, how could that be? But just from my experience, if you look at the self-supports, they start to disappear quicker. Now, again, they're in more urban area, or more rural areas, so it's specifically a design you'll see more in, in rural areas. To the far left is a guy tower. It's a single lattice tower, about three feet in diameter, and it's supported with guy anchors on generally three sides. Depending on the topography, they might have more. But these are generally taller. You'll see guy towers starting about 300 feet. Now, you will see a guy tower that's 40 feet, but that's just, that's the design that's required for this specific location. Guide towers can get up to, you know, thousands of feet in height. Again, more of a, a facility you'd see in a rural location, and more of a facility, I mean, you would never see this probably in this area. I couldn't imagine.
What are you proposing?
What we're proposing is a, what I would note as a flagless flagpole. Don't know if that's going to work.
Just leave it there, though.
Okay.
They're real skilled.
It's a hundred-foot monopole tower with the antenna, oh, thank you, with the antennas embedded inside the tower. So the cables, the antennas, everything is embedded inside the tower. Our proposal is for the cables to come down within the tower, go into the ground, under the ground to the shelter. So they should be, you know, virtuously, virtually non-visible from, near distance from the tower. So, again, 100 feet tall, and it will hold four, there's four sections where antennas can be held. So we don't propose that, that you would get four carriers here. We would propose you would probably get two or three. And that's because, when you, depending on the carrier, depends on the type of equipment and the, that they use. So a carrier like an AT&amp;T or Verizon would probably use two canisters each, where a different carrier might use only one, so.
So it looks like a large flagpole.
Without a flag, yes.
Right.
Yes.
White?
We did, I don't recall, did the ordinance, did it require white, or did it not require white? We.
A restriction on colors.
Yeah. We don't have a problem with pending it white. My personal opinion is that white is visible more often than not. Skies are, are less often white than they are.
Now, what's the width of the, the tower?
The, I'll have to look and see what, what, I'll look and see what the tower drawings
Tell you what, we can come back to that, because I'm sure there'll be some questions. You can look it up and then get back to us.
If you'd like, we can go into the design of the facility itself.
Sure.
We had, going back, we were talking about the, the tower itself, going, looking at the shelter. The shelter, again, is, is designed with a brick facade, and the color scheme is designed to match the Kroger location that's there.
How big of a room is it? It's just like one, it's a.
10 by, 10 by 12? I'll have to, I'll verify that with, with one of the designs. This is, but, again, this is, this is a little busy. I don't like this. If you were closer, that might make sense, but it's just a little bit busy. So, we designed, it's going to be to the rear of the Kroger facility. It'll be actually on the receiving dock, and we've placed the shelter location so as to provide additional barrier, visual barrier, between the buildings to the south and the, and the receiving dock, you know.
So it's roughly in the southeast corner of, of that building?
It is, yes. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Further south and, along that south parking area, so. Again, we showed the towers located next to the building, next to their receiving doors. The shelter is in the far paved area, and all of the cabling will be underground. We proposed a location for a second possible shelter, which, again, will have underground cabling, if we have another carrier come in. But that carrier, you know, we would, we would need to make sure that that carrier complied with this plan as well. So we do have, the lease area is actually 17 by 26. The shelter itself is just slightly, 11, 11 and a half by 20. So, and I was just looking for the size of the, of the tower itself. But again, it's, it's designed to meet with the zoning requirements. We are trying to locate it in a place that will be visually is, is the least impact to the community as possible. And we believe that after this facility was to be built, it would actually just mold into the landscape. It would be something that, although it, you can't hide a tower, there's no, there's no getting around that. There's, you cannot hide a tower. We've tried to design it in a way that would be most compatible with the, with the area around. So, I don't know, I can take questions, or if I can.
The, the buildings, the brick will be, will match the, the shopping center brick?
Yes, sir.
All right, to the board, any questions? Commissioner Gasali.
Yes, my concern is, if you take the, the area of coverage that we don't have, that you're trying to fulfill, say that there's 100% between those two-mile roads and Shelby and Quinder. So out of that 100%, what is the percentage that's going to get coverage with the cell tower? Because you mentioned that it, that there's still going to be some areas that aren't covered by this tower. So what is the percentage?
I could only give you a rough percent that, that this, this appears to cover about half of what the desired, or I shouldn't say desired. There's a, there's a, there's a gap in coverage, and there, the wireless carriers, AT&amp;T is constantly trying to keep up with demand on coverage. So it appears between the, the signals of the other towers, that it just roughly appears that this would cover about half of that area.
So then, what happens to the, at that point? You have another 50% that's not getting coverage, and are they, is the AT&amp;T going to want to put a tower in another location within a mile east of that area?
Yeah, I, I hesitate from speaking for AT&amp;T. I generally, I, I can speak for Crown Castle as their representative, but as far as speaking for AT&amp;T, I don't know. I can't tell you that, in the wireless industry, we are, the carriers, the industry itself is constantly trying to keep up. We are, there's demand, I mean, is, demand is just continual. It's not only demand, the number of phones that are coming out, the number of, of communication devices, but the demand for each of those devices that is increasing. So if you, you know, each time that we take a photo and send it to a friend, each time that we, you know, videotape our grandchildren on the soccer field, I mean, that's, that's demand on the system, and it's wonderful that we have this system. I, I think, I, I take great pride in the, in the, the work that we do to have, you know, one of the best wireless communications infrastructure worldwide. But it is something that we have to constantly work on, and it's something that we have to, you know, there's a balancing act between the, the demands of the industry, the demands of the customers, and meeting our, our other demands as customers, or demands that we, you know, we live in a community that's not, you know, filled with wires, you know. So I, I don't know if that answered your question specifically, but it's.
Well, typically, how close are these towers in communities? I mean, it sounds like in order to get coverage of this area in Shelby Township, this will cover 50% of the uncovered residents. Now, is it reasonable? I don't, I never notice these towers, you know, they, they go up, we probably never notice them in our daily life.
Thank you.
But what, how close are they typically? Do you have towers two miles apart?
You can have towers. I have, where I live, I live in Indianapolis, and I have a tower that's, you know, two tenths of a mile from my house. I have another tower that is another tenth of a mile, just north of me. So, and it's just, it's due to the demand on the, the wireless carriers. It all, you know, I can't give you an answer, I can't say, you know what, there will be a tower every mile and a half. I can't say there will be one, you know, it demand, it depends on a lot of things. Topography, heights of, of towers, you know, you want, you, you'd think. Topography, heights of, of towers, you know, you want, you, you think, okay, well, we'll just put one tower that's, you know, 500 feet tall. It doesn't, that doesn't fit, that doesn't cure the, cure the gap. It, it all depends on the demand, and the demand in, in, in this area is one that honestly, AT&amp;T's been working on for the past seven years, trying to find that fit between building the right facility in the right location and meeting the demand of the, of the, you know, the same folks who are in the, in this area, so.
Win, any idea how many cell towers we have in Shelby Township?
No. We do have a lot of co-locations. There, the nearest one to this site is Mount, west side of Mount, east side of Mount, north of 25 Mile Road, where there's a self-storage facility. There's a tower there. The ITC transmission lines along the trail, the Coleman Orchard Trail, there are, there are wireless equipment on some of those. This is the first tower we've had in a long time. I think the last one was at 22 and Van Dyke in the storage facility.
Mr. Fire, you're next.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, could I ask, who is Fortune Wireless?
Fortune Wireless is a contractor. They are, they, they're a turnkey contractor. They have a real estate division, they have a construction division, and they have an engineering division. A carrier such as AT&amp;T doesn't have their, a, those groups in the company. They, because there's, they have such a massive amount of work to do, they will hire vendors, and it's, they would, they prefer to hire vendors rather than internalize all of those activities. So, AT&amp;T went to Crown, or went, I'm sorry, went to Fortune Wireless and said, try, you know, use your expertise, try and find us a, a location for a site.
Are, are you Fortune Wireless?
I began with Fortune Wireless. I am now working for Crown Castle. Crown Castle is a tower company, so we, we manage the facility, and we will lease, we will, we will construct and then lease the facility to AT&amp;T or, or other carriers.
Did you negotiate a contract with Kroger?
We did.
You did?
Yes.
You mind telling the public what you pay them a month, a year, or whatever it is?
There are two things. One, I don't know, and secondly, it's proprietary, so I couldn't give you that information if I did.
You didn't look for a location in Oakland County? Across the street?
Across...
To the west of Dequender.
Okay. I believe Fortune Wireless did an exhaustive search for many years trying to find a location. I can't tell you exactly where they went to across the street, but I, I'm confident that they looked across the street.
Who cho, who chose that site? You?
Chose the site, I think that, that after a long period of time, we found a location that would, that would fit, and I was involved with making sure that the, the facility was designed to meet the zoning regulations.
Do you have a signed contract with Kroger?
We have, we have a contract with Kroger.
You have a signed contract with Kroger?
We have, yeah. I don't have a contract to provide for you today, but yes, we do.
I, I was wondering if the people who live around there, no doubt shop at Kroger, they might make their concerns known to Kroger, unless you already have something signed, sealed, and delivered. You don't know.
We have Kroger's permission as well to, for the petition. Kroger signed the petition for us to...
Corporate is, corporate is apt to change their mind if they were to start getting numbers of calls. What happened, you said you looked around 26 Mile Road also?
I said that the real estate division for Fortune Wireless looked around. I, sir, I didn't personally go out and find the locations, and I was brought in as a, as a consultant, as working for Fortune Wireless with my zoning background. So, I was brought in several times to look at different locations and determine if they would meet with the zoning regulations. I was brought in, once this site was, was found, I was again brought in to and asked whether it would meet with zoning regulations.
Is, is A&amp;T driving this? AT, AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is the carrier that, that was looking for a location, yes.
Because they're having a problem in that area with their what?
AT&amp;T has a gap in their coverage, in their wireless coverage, so that they were looking for a location. They went to Fortune Wireless, who found, you know, different locations, and then Crown Castle had a communication with this property owner, and we went to this property owner, and they thought it was a viable location.
Mr. Kirk, not prejudging the vote, however, is there any way of rejecting this application?
You can reject the application if you wish.
Well, what, is it, is it something that the planning commission can stop? That's, that's all I'm asking.
Well, you can vote to stop it, whether it gets upheld in the courts or another...
That's, that's what I was...
You have issues with regard to, like, you can't base it on aesthetics?
Yeah.
The, the law's just really tight on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I got right now.
Okay. Any other question? Mr. Della.
Yep. Actually, good questions, and the, the answer to the first one was that we preferred a taller tower, and we were restricted by the zoning regulations, so that's where we came to the 100 feet. And AT&amp;T would, or any carrier would prefer to have a bit taller tower, and it, it might actually help fulfill the gap in coverage to have a bit taller tower. I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of assuming that that would be the case, because, again, I'm, I'm not an RF engineer, and I'm not trying to put myself off as an RF, right, right. I couldn't tell you exactly what the, you know, you know, the height is that to meet a, a specific absolute need. I can tell you that, again, we would, we were trying to go for a taller tower, and we were restricted by the zoning regulations, so, you know, you get what you can with that. You, you know, we weren't trying to violate the zoning regulations, we were just trying to comply. So, your other question, as far as the, a tree or of some sort, I've had, it started in wireless in 1990, no, I'm sorry, 2000, started wireless in 2000. And when we're looking at a facility specifically for design, we try and look at, in this case, the, the request was for a stealth design. We didn't want to go monopole, we didn't want to go guide tower, self-support, stealth design. And the, the design, when you're thinking about stealth, you look at, does the stealth This is, again, a flagpole, flagless flagpole. We thought about a, a tree, and putting the tree there would, you know, stick out more. This tower's, we feel is designed so that it will, over time, will disappear. As I, we had a comment that you don't know, you don't know how many towers are out there, or how many facilities are out there. That is, is absolutely true, as the, if the towers are designed correctly, you know, you can't, again, you can't hide a tower, but if it's placed in the right location, if you don't, don't draw attention to it, such as if we were to put a flag on this pole, you would drive by the Kroger and say, why is there a flag behind the Kroger on the dock? You know, it would just draw attention to this design, and it would, it would, you know, eliminate the stealthiness. We feel by designing it as a single pole, there's other monopoles on the property with lighting and signage and that sort of thing, that we feel that this design, from a distance, for, over time, will just, will, will disappear. Not entirely, you'll all be able to, everyone here in this room would be able to point it out anytime they walk by, but we feel this design is, is the best for this location.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body. The Township Board will evaluate our recommendation. The Township Board will make a final decision on this request. At this point, anyone from the audience is welcome to come up and offer, ask any questions or comments. And I would just need you to state your name and address and sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Thompson. I live at 1950 Clearwood Court, Shelby Township. I've lived in my residence for 15 years now, and I just want to remind this group that the corner of Dequender and Tanken or 25 Mile Road is one of the major...
Or Runyon, but go ahead.
Pardon?
Or Runyon, actually, it's Runyon there.
Or Runyon, yeah, it's just...
I've lived here a long time.
I've been here 15 years, I still don't know all the names. In any event, it's one of the gateways of our community, and all four corners of that intersection at 25 and, and Dequender are fully developed. There's, it, I know I can't object to it on the basis of aesthetics, but it seems to me that with all the parks we have, with all the vacant land we have, that there's got to be a better option. One question I have for the applicant is, he alluded to the fact that there was some type of technical deficiency as to why they couldn't take an existing tower and upgrade it. And I'd like a little more information. I mean, if, if you take the industry's position to its logical conclusion, we're going to have a cell tower on every corner in every major town. It's, it's absurd. We've got to be able to force these carriers to share a tower. And I also have a question for Mr. Win, if I may ask it now.
Well, you can ask it now, we'll see if, if...
Okay. Does federal preemption mean that a municipality cannot object to a installation of a cellular tower for no reason whatsoever?
You can let Mr. Kirk answer that, I mean, he's, he's the township's attorney.
You can't do it for no reason whatsoever.
I'm not sure that answers my question.
I thought your question was, can you just deny it for no, and give no reason you can't?
No, I didn't say that. I said, do we have, it, does federal preemption require us to approve?
If it fits your ordinance and the other parameters of the federal law, yes.
What about the issue of an allegation made that there's a structural deficiency in the existing towers, and therefore we must build another 25?
Once they provide what's called a comprehensive application, the burden shifts to, it's deemed prima facie that it should be approved, and then the township has to show that it can go somewhere else.
Well, I, I don't consider what happened tonight a comprehensive application. I, I heard about every 10th word, and I don't know why.
It's what was filed with all their findings.
Anyway, I want to remind this council that, in my view, this transit, proposed transaction is going to be another inflatable soccer dome. It's going to be ugly, it's not compatible with the existing development at that intersection. There's got to be another, another way for them to proceed. We've got to force these carriers to share towers, repair the ones that are broken, and upgrade the ones that are already existing. But I don't want, for one, a tower in every corner. It's absurd. Thank you.
Sir, could you sign in, please? Need you to sign in. Sign in, yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Sir.
I live at 54900 Hennington Court in the hills of Regency, 1,000 feet from where this is I'd like to make some, ask some questions, and then I'd have some comments, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, go ahead.
Why did we select the location? I think I heard some reason why they selected the location. The thing is, we've got a, we've got a cell tower here, right here, right here, behind the building. We have one at the Onyx, it's in Oakland Township. Why do we need another tower? To fill up half of a two-mile radius? It just, meaningless, doesn't make any sense to me at all. The drawings that Mr. Win proposed, or at least provided for me the other day when I was in here, there's future design loading on this tower. Future design loading. What does that mean? Does that mean I'm going to see, I'm going to see these big, ugly-looking things on the outside of the tower? What does that, what does that mean? What does future design loading mean? And there's two locations on this tower that says that. Are they going to be inside? I doubt it, because once you put the tower up, and you've got the stuff inside, you can't, you can't do anything except hang this crap on the outside. The other thing is, on the, on the Kroger, on the Kroger site plan, there's also a note on here that says, "proposed future lease area." What does that mean? We're going to put another tower in there? What is, what is, what is, what has been going on with, with the Crown Castle and the, and down the line? If, if AT&amp;T wants to get another 50%, we put up another tower? I don't get it. The other thing on this drawing that really disturbs me is that, take a look at all of the existing buildings that are within 300 feet of the tower. These are all people, hundreds of people, and with 1,000 feet, I'm one of them. So, I just want to make these comments about cellular towers and, and the radiation that they generate. This was taken off the internet, my wife did. The threat comes from the constant nature of the activity of the towers. They emit pulsed radio frequencies. The radiation has been shown in thousands of studies to cause biological damage to the human being. I don't want to have that exposed to me, I really don't. I'm really upset about this. That, that's all I can say. I'm really upset about it, because there's proven evidence that cell towers cause cancer. Proven evidence in Israel, in Argentina, in Germany, everywhere. It's proven. And I know the government won't allow you to reject this because of that. I know that. It's unfortunate. So, I object to this, I really do. I don't want to see it. Appreciate you listening to me.
All right, thank you. Back here.
Jim Gomickia, 54746, Monarch Drive. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just came down to state my opposition for the proposed cell tower and auxiliary building. Now, I hear that there might be multiple buildings. Nothing about it is appealing to me or any of the residents that I've talked to. It's an eyesore, not only visually, obviously, radio frequency. I find it an absurd location, in addition to now what I heard tonight, as the applicant stated, that it doesn't even fulfill the requirements that they have. It doesn't even fill that gap. The noise of the building as it's going up, the frequency waves, I wouldn't want it on the skyline, let alone 100 feet from my front door, or my front window. I find it hard to believe that this is the best location. There's plenty of industrial locations within that, what, three-square-mile radius. I don't feel that it was prepared well enough or professionally convincing here at the I don't feel that it was prepared well enough or professionally convincing here at the meeting, or, I mean, we don't even know how big this flagpole is around. I don't think it's a pole at all, it's a tower, however you want to look at it. There's antenna and cable in that pole, and so it's got to be at least as wide as the antennas. I believe it's three around, four around. Aside from the property values being finally on the rise and then decreasing, I have trouble with the FCC rules being used as a scapegoat. I think that we can put this in a viable location, or we can look at the, improving the carriers' technology themselves and upgrading that within the actual towers that exist in those remote locations. So I respectfully request denial of recommendation of the special land use to the Board of Trustees tonight. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Irene Rodecky, 54651, Ashford Court, Hills of Regency 2. Last week I came here to the municipal office to inquire who owns that property, because I was under the impression that Chirco still was the owner of it, but I was advised that it was sold in 1999 to a private company that does all the real estate work for Kroger. Couple of years ago, we were here fighting the fact that they were trying to put a gas station right in the parking lot of Hills of Regency. We fought, we won on that. Well, now I'm definitely adamantly against a tower going up. I'm assuming that the cell tower would be in the parking lot of the Kroger property?
It's behind the building on the southeast corner.
Well, my number one objection to the tower is, anything that is highly electrified, like a cell tower, would emit electrical particles into the air, which is a health hazard. My number two objection to it is, putting a tower in a highly-priced residential area, as far as I'm concerned, is a big no-no. We paid high dollars for our property, condos and homes, and we're paying high taxes and we want to retain the value of our property. And a tower like that is certainly not going to enhance the value of our property. Number three, if it's going to be in the parking lot of the shopping area, right now that parking lot is filled to capacity daily. In a couple of weeks, the restaurant is going to open. Where does Kroger intend for the people to park? This is no place for a cell tower to be placed. If Kroger wants a tower, let them put one up at the marketplace of 24 East. There's a lot of properties, commercial property, and that would be an ideal place for it. Well, I'm sorry, but that's how I feel about it, and I'm highly rejecting a tower, because that's no place in a highly residential area. Thank you.
Okay, I'll get you to sign in, please. Is there anyone else wish to comment, sir?
My name's James Willard. I live at 2153 Willow Circle in Briarwood Condos. We're about 800 feet from where this tower would be. One question that no one asked, I presume this thing will have to have some sort of flashing lights on top of it? That'll probably run 24 hours, seven days a week?
We'll ask them when, when we're done.
I mean, let's be honest, Kroger's been anything but our best neighbor. They run a circus in their parking lot all summer, every year. They tried to bring us a gas station last year. Obviously, they're a little bit profit motivated. Do they, you know, neighbors are one thing, but money's more important to them. This is a gold-plated example, and I have to thank Mr. Veyer for asking the question that they won't answer. How much money's involved here for Kroger? The hell with the neighbors, it's about the money. A 100-foot tower, contrary to your opinions, sir, will not ever disappear.
No, no, just to the questions of the board, your comments to the board.
A 100-foot tower will never disappear, contrary to the contractor's opinion. And I wonder if it was, you know, 700 or 800 feet from his house, if he'd think it was going to disappear soon. This is just absurd. This is the wrong place. We have everything on that corner now, except the Ferris wheel. I plead with you people, use common sense, this is a bad idea. Thank you.
Okay, could you sign in, please? Anyone else wish to comment, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for having me down to speak on this wonderful subject of the cell tower. And basically, it's trying to put lipstick on a pig. It's still a pig. And despite what the gentleman said earlier, the stealth end of it, trying to make it go away, I think everybody's talking about the same thing, including the project sponsor, it's still going to be there. Question. Commissioner Casari had a point about half a coverage in an area. That's a square, is it, we just moved here, so is it a square mile from Dequender to Shelby? What, it'd be 25 down to 24, roughly a square mile?
Roughly two miles.
It's a two-mile square?
Less than that, but-
Okay, so a two-mile square-
About a mile, that's what I think the area they're talking about.
Okay, thank you. So a small square like that, going through all this expense for coverage, half the coverage, makes no sense at all. Talking about litigation, perhaps there's a point there. Why? The other question I had, and it was brought up by one of the gentlemen this evening, was, was Rochester notified on this, or Rochester Hills, and what was their position on it? Since those folks that live right across Dequender and are good neighbors to Shelby Township will visualize and see the same thing. I'm just curious what their comments were on it. Question.
Mr. Nguyen, Bud-
They were notified.
They were notified.
And the response?
They didn't respond.
Yeah.
It's unlikely, it's rare that we get comments from surrounding communities.
In a situation like this, I would think it's going to affect, if the residents knew it over there, they'd have just as much concern about it as we do here in Shelby Township.
The only, the city was notified, we didn't get any comments.
Now, this is not a permitted use then, in general terms in Shelby Township. That's why we have the special land use hearing-
It's permitted under a special land use provision. So it is permitted in this, in this zoning.
But as a rule, it's not a permitted use, is that correct? Or it is in light industrial or commercial, or what's the permitted use of a cell tower in Shelby Township?
Chairman, I can answer that.
Mr. Nguyen.
They're only, they're not listed as a specific permitted use, they're allowed as special land use as in any non-residential zoning district, subject to certain standards.
Okay, good point. And if it was a good thing, it would be a permitted use. And Canton Township, when I was chairman of the commission out there, we put them into light industrial areas. And we went to court on it, time after time after time, and were very successful with the decision. And it stuck. And the special land use request came up, it was denied, this is good fodder for the attorney here, and we won our case in court as well. This is not a good thing for the community, and it's not a good thing for the residential area. And it's not a good thing when you have residences that were well-planned by all of you folks, from about 250 to 300,000, now scratching 550 to 600,000. It's not a good use. And certainly, I would really ask the commission, the attorney, to everyone do their homework, please, and deny this request by, I guess it's the tower company, it's not even the representative of AT&amp;T, I was unclear of that, based on the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, could you sign in, please?
Sure will.
And could you state your name and address for the record?
Oh, certainly, excuse me. Victor Gustafson, 54691, Bellingham Drive, or here in Shelby 4316, in the Hills of Regency condominiums. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wish to comment?
I'm Patricia Thomas, 54805, Hennington Court, Shelby Township. And I'd just like to say, if there's a risk to the health of the residents, why would we take that risk?
All right, let me, you know, that's been raised a lot, a number of times.
Yes.
You know, the federal government has said that there isn't a risk.
I know.
And it's not a consideration, you know, that's not a factor we can even consider because there isn't a risk.
Okay.
Okay, so-
I know, but I still would like to have that on the record, because it's a huge concern. We're people, we have grandchildren, children, and we do things to protect our health. And this is obviously, whether the government says it or not, this, this is detrimental to our health.
You could sign in. Ma'am, could you sign in, please? Yeah. Okay, is anyone else wish to comment? Okay, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Judy Hall. I live at 54900, Hennington Court, Shelby Township. The proposed tower will be 1,000 feet, I believe it is, from our home. I don't have an aesthetic objection. What I have are questions, you said that most towers are put for special use in non-residential areas. This is high concentration, people. We have multiple families living within yards feet of this place. This is not just a shopping center. Anyone wants to drive over there, you'll see our homes. You'll see the apartments. This is not non-residential for special use. I'm very concerned about that. There has to be another place to put these things. Most often, they're put on top of the electrical lines that go through. We've all seen these huge structures. They're quite capable of giving a home to this electronic magnetic whatever emissions, and it's not residential. That would fulfill your special use requirement, I believe. I don't understand why more effort hasn't been used. Yes, you can go through and find someone greedy enough, like Kroger, to say, "Yeah, pay me, pay me per month." About 10 years ago, I worked for a foam industry. We put a billboard up in our parking lot and got $10,000 a month for it. It's no emissions, no nothing, but boy, was that great on the profit line. $10,000 is a great cushion. That was 10 years ago. I cannot possibly imagine what they're offering Kroger. No wonder it's proprietary. Who would want the public to know? There are better places to put this equipment. It would be more tolerable somewhere else, and you heard them say. 50% of the area is covered. And on the drawings, you see, there is an option for future development. To cover the other 50%, people, read the drawings. You're not going to have one tower there, you're going to have two, maybe more, for coverage. Is that really what you want? They get their foot in the door, and it's a done deal. I don't know about you, but I live there, and I'm tired of bending over. I'm tired of having my life so shallowly valued. And I want to look at each one of you. You tell me, what's my life worth to you? Mr. Bernardi?
Yes?
I just want to look at you.
You know, okay, ma'am, you know-
Okay, that's, that's all I have to say.
Can I ask you a question? Do you have a cellphone?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is not AT&amp;T. And if it was, I'd hand it in.
Well, again, it's all, you know, and the first cellphone you had to this most recent cellphone, to a future cellphones, they've become more and more and more. So this demand that this, this person is trying to, to-
Yes, sir.
To meet?
Yes, sir.
We're the ones that created it. You know, you can blame Candy Crush, or, you know, all the different-
But do we have to put it next to our homes? Can't we put it on top of some of these lines that are going through?
Well-
Does it have to be in a high residential area? I don't think so.
It's in a commercial area. And frankly, these towers, these towers are in residential, near residential areas throughout the community.
Well, we have an opportunity to say no.
The one that Mr. Nguyen referred to down the road at 25, 25 Mile and Mound is within 1,000 feet from my house.
Mr. Moffett, sincerely, I encourage you to vote no. Because we have an opportunity to say, "Not here." Thank you.
Okay, is anyone else wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Nguyen, your, your thoughts?
Well, a couple of, a couple of thoughts. The, the ordinance provides for these as a special land use, as we referenced before, and it deals with questions of tower height, setbacks, maintenance, lighting. There will be no lights on the tower. That was one question that was raised. They've met all those standards of the ordinance. The other standards are the general compatibility standards, and I, in my view, they've met all those standards as well. If there's a hole in the argument for this, I think it's the, that there wasn't an RF engineer here explaining the gaps in the coverage. Because the way, as I'm, you know, Mr. Kirk can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to wade into, to the legal territory, but the, the information they provided, it's we can't discriminate between providers, aesthetics can't be used as a primary reason. We can't take an action that would have the effect of prohibiting service. So the question here is, what's the service area, and where's the gap? And, you know, they provided that general map, but I think that's the hole in the argument that I, you know, for the, the way, as competent as this proposal was presented in terms of the material, that's a hole, that's a hole that I think we feel, we need more information on. And the other one is, we can't base our decision on environmental effects as long as they comply with FCC regulations. So those are the areas, the federal government basically said, "We'll, we'll address those issues, not somebody else." So those are the, I mean, I think they've met the burden of, in terms of the general zoning standards, but I don't, don't think they've really drilled deep enough to give us some information about why that location, and what the, what the impact would be if we didn't approve this. And I think that's their obligation to provide that information.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Good, thank you. Okay. Give the petitioner come back up. Just some of the questions that I gleaned. Multiple towers?
The only, the site plan as provided is the only thing that would be permitted under this petition. So, I'm sorry, am I getting to your question?
Well, that's, that's, okay.
Okay.
But there were then two other statements on, though, the future design loading and proposed future lease area. I want to address those.
Right. The specific, the specific plan that we've proposed is for interior antennas and interior cables. One tower with one shelter proposed immediately, and then to comply with the, both Crown Castle's desires to co-locate and the township's desires to make it a co-locatable facility, we have space for another shelter facility. So that's, that's figured in for a second carrier to comply with the, the regulations.
Okay. You know, the technical deficiencies, the why-location, I think Mr. Nguyen sort of hit on that, I think we may need some additional information before we make a decision.
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest, because the gentleman had asked some questions, and I thought, you know, it might be a good idea for us to come back at another time and provide you with an RF engineer and with somebody they can say, you know, these are facilities that we've looked at prior, you know, answer some of the questions that, that, you know, I wasn't able to answer today. So, you know, be more than happy to do that if that's, if that's the preference, so.
Okay, good. And provided that we do that, anyone who received a notice will get another notice. And if you want to make sure, make, sign in, and we'll make, Mr. Nguyen will make sure he gets you one. With that, I'll undertake a motion to close the public hearing.
I don't move.
Is there support?
As you said, there was a couple of other questions. As you said, there was a couple of other questions.
What's that?
I thought there was a couple of other questions.
No, we're done with the questions. We're good. Okay, thank you. The basis for our recommendation must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval, disapprove this request, or table it to evaluate it further. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to recommend we table this special land use for the application, applicant to bring back the appropriate engineer to clearly show us the area of concern with the no cell coverage, and also to clearly state the surrounding areas that you have researched for tower location and reasons why you've not chosen, or why you have chosen to look elsewhere and locate the tower in the Kroger Shopping Plaza.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
The board.
Moved by Casali, supported by Bernardi. Any questions on the motion? Hearing done, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
No.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Chair votes no.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vier.
It's my belief that we should move forward with this tonight. Many, many items come to this body, and they're postponed and put off, and I think that this body is heard enough tonight to make a decision on it. So that explains my no vote on tabling this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's tabled. If you want to make sure, if you get notice, you can sign in. And with that, we'll go to the next item.
Chairman? If anybody just wants to sign and take it outside and leave it on our counter, we'll be happy to do it later. But take it outside so we can continue the meeting. Sign it at the front counter, and we'll make sure you get notified.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I always, I also want to say that I want to thank the gentleman for posing the question about the federal, to the attorney that I could not get the words out on. So I thank you for that. That was the question I intended to ask.
Okay, next item, site plan, no, it's been, ma'am, it's been tabled. Site plan number one, number 14-05, John D. Martinez, Giant Investment Company. Is a petitioner here? Can you give us a brief explanation of what you're looking to do?
I'm Daniel D. Martinez. I'm representing the applicant, Giant Investment. We're proposing a, roughly an 8,000-square-foot retail center on Shana Road, just south of the fire station there, south of West Star Drive. We are the original developers of West Star. That's one of our few lots that are left over, and we feel we want to develop it at this time.
Do you want to give me a little more detail as what you're looking to do?
We're requesting, respectfully requesting, a site plan approval for the 8,000-square-foot retail.
Okay. Mr. Win.
This site is, this building would be located directly south of Fire Station Number Four. That kind of gives you a reference, east side of Shana, north of 23 Mile Road. Based on the size of the building, 40 parking spaces are required. They show 40 spaces, two of them are parallel spaces. We don't allow parallel parking. So they're technically two spaces short. There's a total of 15 parking spaces located behind the building. That's 150 feet from the front entrance, and they have to cross the drive-through lane if you're walking in. Now, if those spaces are primarily going to be used for employee parking, that's probably okay, but if they're walking, if you're walking in to try to get to one of the stores, that's probably not, there's not really a good provision for pedestrian access along the building. A total of four street trees and seven parking lot trees are provided. They only show three trees. We'd like to see a lighting fixture detailed, typical catalog fixtures, so we know exactly what they're proposing, and a light, there's a light pole along the western property line that were relocated to observe the five-foot setback. Now they encroach into the parking lot. There may be a solution to the, the design solution to these issues. If they reduce the building modestly, the depth of the building or the width of the building, they could get rid of the additional two parking spaces. That's 10-feet-wide area, they could add that to the back of the building, put the light fixtures back there, and a little landscaping, they probably have found a way around all this. We asked for a parking, a traffic study. I'm not sure it's necessary here because after we did a preliminary review, the road commission got a hold of this, made a completely rearrange the design of the site. So they've already met the road, Department of Roads standards. There's no reason, I think, to do a traffic study when they've already done their due diligence with Mr. Molistas at Department of Roads. So I think, you know, I wouldn't hesitate to alter my recommendation and recommend approval, subject to the resubmission of the plan that meets those design criteria, and then they'd be able to move forward. Because there's nothing here that can't be adjusted by making the building just a little smaller. So I'm satisfied with that, having talked to Mr. D. Martinez earlier today.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dalu?
Is that something that the applicant will read?
Well, I think, I think, you know, the condition of the approval would be that he, yes, which subject to...
I want to ask the applicant, do you have a drive-through tenant in existence?
No, we do not have any tenants signed at this moment. We just are preparing for the option to have a drive-through.
Any other questions? I'll undertake a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion would be, if you're favorable, to recommend, to approve the site plan, subject to the revision of a revised plan, meaning all the department hits comments.
Now, if you start making motions, no one else ever will.
Well, I'm just suggesting.
Don't move. You got that, Kathy?
I did.
All right. Is there support?
Yes.
Moved by Vier, supported by Casali. Any questions on the motion? Really, no questions on that motion? Nobody's got a question? All right, I'll call the, Commissioner, Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Pone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck, gentlemen.
Very much.
Planage report.
Two, two comments. I gave you our administrative approval form. We had quite a few signs this past month and several temporary use permits. It is fireworks season again. I think we have four fireworks tents. The other thing I mentioned to Kathy before the meeting and Mr. Moffett, we have a lot of site plans that are submitted. I think we had three that came in today. They're lined up on the counter. That's how busy it's been. In order to expedite this kind of quickly, we're really projecting already out until end of July. But we have three that came in that are just site plans, no public hearings. I was going to suggest we have a special meeting on the 30th, if anybody could make, if we could get enough people to make it to approve those plans. That'll keep moving these people forward. What I don't want to do is, we can't, we have three already for the next meeting. I don't want to put six of them on. I think that's too much. But I also don't want them to wait until mid-July and think what else is coming, because, you know, we want to be user-friendly as we can. And we have some, a couple of industrial buildings that are coming in, which are, I think, very important, and if we can move these things quickly through the process, which are pretty easy site plans, I think everybody benefits.
Yeah, they're getting in the building.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody then? We'll send you, I'll send you a notice confirming that.
But you're nodding heads, so you're good. All right.
And with that... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No business on the floor. Nobody's here. Commissioner Dalu, you got one more for me?
One, two, three.
Awarded, call in favor.
Hi. You don't need those, do you?